Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the November 13th, 2023 school board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Barb Lynch?
Here.
Crystal Lee?
Here.
Jennifer Deek?
Here.
Kadeja Islam?
Excused.
Chris Lau?
Here.
Lindsay Need?
Here.
Maggie Smith?
Here.
Bridgette Todd-Ravens?
Here.
All right, with six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved?
Second.
Second was Maggie?
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. All right, tonight we will be moving on to public participation. I will call on those registered to address the board relative to an agenda item or item that did not reach resolution through Policy 9130 at this time. Public participants will state their name, address, and affiliation with the item addressed. Public participation is limited to three minutes per person. A total of 15 minutes has been allotted for public participation portion of the meeting. I ask those present to respect the rights of others wishing to speak by refraining from interrupting them. According to Board Policy 167.3, citizens are expected to use proper etiquette, decorum, and respect when addressing the board. I remind speakers that they are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. In recognition of the privacy rights of individuals and employees of the district, the Board of Education prohibits any public comment on any individuals, students, or constituents of the district, and on matters in which an employee, student, or constituent may be identified or inferred from the comments. Please refer to Policy 167.3 Public Comment at board meetings for additional information. So tonight I call upon Patrick Barlow to come forward.
Good evening. Let's see, Patrick Barlow, 907 Dana Lane. I'm a parent in the district, serve as village president, I'm an interested community member and Cubs fan, but I probably should not have mentioned that affiliation. I'm here to talk about your discussion related to the change of the school date, and I know the plan is perhaps to move just back a week to August 24th for the 24-25 school year. And, you know, part of what I do in terms of representing the community is represent the Village of Holman on the tourism board. I do not speak for the Explorer Cross Board in its entirety, but I know that as a group, when we talk about school start times, that it's really critical to understand the value of tourism and starting at or as close to September 1st as possible impacts families' ability to travel and spend their tourism dollars. That affects the ability of these businesses related to tourism to staff their businesses. And although I think probably that there is probably a very valiant or valid reason why you are exploring this issue, the bigger concern for me related to this issue is just my apparent lack of sense of that this was even being discussed or the communication related to this issue. I look back through your vision newsletters, I try to look at all the Facebook, social media, I try to look at available agendas and minutes. I know you have great skill sets here about promoting school issues. You have award-winning folks within the communications area. You do a great job with communicating around referendums, but this particular issue, I didn't hear much about, an issue that affects all families and an issue that impacts the school district. And somewhat concerned related to other issues, maybe high school class times, maybe some of the budget issues as well, that in the past, the board had subcommittees. I am only seeing a diversity subcommittee and a policy subcommittee. You had community members serving as sounding boards on the Salt Committee, Buildings and Grounds, Finance Committee, which I served on for several years. So I'm just concerned about making decisions in a vacuum that affect a lot of the residents. This is one, and maybe it's only for one year, and I'm going to sit back in the meeting and hear about your discussion, but I think it's critical to not become isolated as a board, even if there's rarely anyone who speaks to you at your meetings, interacts with you on these decisions. Because I think moving into the future, it's just critical to keep the community connected with your decision-making, the issues that you are evaluating. So I just offer that this evening for the value that you may find in it, those comments. I know myself, I often speak to empty rooms at meetings and making important decisions for the community, but I think it's good to continue to make the attempt to bring these issues and at least let folks in the community know why you're making these or that you're evaluating these decisions, such as important decision about start of the school year. So thank you for your attention, and I will eagerly await your discussion later in the meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, tonight I would like to recognize our Holman Area Foundation. I see we have Mr. Baird and Mr. Lindsay in the audience. This past year, it's our, we had the first annual block party, which was a collaborative effort of our Holman Area Foundation and Holman Booster Club, along with our leadership team, just really collaborating, working together to put on an amazing event for our community. Even though the weather wasn't quite as we had hoped for, it still was a very successful event. And I will say the grand total that through the ticket sales and monies that were able to be raised through many of our banks supporting the event was over $6,000, $6,678, which is outstanding in that. So tonight we wanted to present a check to the Holman Area Foundation for $3,500 from our leadership team for the efforts to go towards the other opportunities for the foundation to support endeavors in our school district. So with that. It's a big one.
Thank you.
All right, can we move away from that poll? All right. There we go. One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds good. We're good.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Jason Luloff, AD at the high school.
And we are here tonight to officially thank our officials for our fall sports season. I think we both had a great season and really always appreciate our officials kind of stepping up to help officiate our games for our students. And then also if there's any cancellations or additions, just with the ever continuing change of what whatever brings our way, we always ask those officials and they are always willing to adjust and or reach out to their peers to help cover if they can't. So we really appreciate that.
A special thank you is always appreciated, and I just want to kind of point out kind of the condition of where officiating is at. As people may or may not be aware, I'm the president of Wisconsin Wrestling Coaches Association, and I network a lot with all the other coaches' associations across the state, and pretty much every coaches' association is currently in a recruiting state of officials. We are not only strategically trying to figure out how to get the next generation involved, but also how to advocate for them and the situation because they're stretched so thin. And I mean, it's pretty much every meeting I've been in, in the past three meetings have been revolving around officials. So we appreciate the people in this area. We're pretty fortunate, being so close to some colleges, to get some officials that are willing to work some hours. And typically, we find officials, but it's not that way across the state. So we feel really lucky to have the group of people that we're working with and look forward to getting some new people involved. So anyone listening out there, we'd love to get your applications.
Well, yeah, and I think also that our officials that we have are committed to our district for sure, and so they're even reaching out on how can we help train new officials that are trying to step in. And so they're kind of taking up, they're, you know, coming to train some of our new officials to really help boost up our pool of officials as time goes on.
So thanks for the support.
All right, thank you.
Then I just wanted to do a couple other recognitions. I think it's very important that we recognize it's American Education Week. It's a week that we really need to honor public education and all that it does for our community and for the betterment of everything that we do and just not only celebrate our teachers, but all those others that contribute to the success of our students and their futures in that within our community. So just wanted to make sure and thank everyone for that. And lastly, this past week was National School Psychologist Week, and wanted to thank our school psychologists for all that they do in supporting our families and our staff and just, they have a special set of skills that is definitely valued in our district, and we thank them for that in all they do for our students.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to reports and discussions. Item 8.1, Holman High School Activities Director Jason Luloff will present the Holman High School Gymnasium Bleacher Bids. This item will appear on the November 27th consent agenda.
Thank you again, Jason Luloff, High School, AD. So I'm going to start off just by kind of painting a picture of kind of my journey in learning about our bleachers. When I took over this position, I'll be honest, I had no idea that our bleachers were really all that, all that in need of something, to the point where like the first event that I was working, I had somebody come up to me and be like, when will Holman get new bleachers? And I was kind of like, yeah, soon, maybe, I don't know. Didn't really like understand what they were referring to, but it only took it work in a couple of events, specifically the winter events, people coming in with shoes that are wet. Our elderly population and our most, our most precious movers are at a little bit of a disadvantage climbing up into the bleachers. Our bleacher rise height is a lot more steep than any of the new bleachers that exist. And to top it off, we don't have handrails to assist the large step, which makes it a little bit difficult to navigate. So what ends up happening is we have a lot of the people who can't lift their leg high enough to get up the bleachers sitting in the very front row, which if you've ever been in our gymnasium, it's my belief, I guess I don't have the facts, but usually gymnasiums have a little bit more room between the bleacher end and the court. So whenever the school was built, for whatever reason, our bleachers ended up a little bit closer than the average bleachers. So now we're putting this population of people really close to the game action, in which players and balls and whatever else are really near them. So that's kind of made me cringe over time. It's an accident waiting to happen, in my opinion. With the, with the handrail situation, I have personally witnessed people falling on the bleachers several times in the short time I've been working here. I have some people who wait for me at the door so I can assist them up the bleachers so that they can get to a spot. And I frequently have visitors that come into our building complain to me about how they love coming and watch their grandson or granddaughter play, but they dread going up our bleachers. In addition to that, any person who attends our events for wheelchair accessibility really struggles with our bleacher situation. You can, with newer bleachers, you have the ability to push in segments of the bleachers to create space and room. They're pretty adjustable and makes that a much more, an environment in which the wheelchair is further off of the court and can be in any area of the court, preferably the areas that are less prone to players nearing. And with our current bleacher situation, we don't have that ability to accommodate any of that. So oftentimes, the wheelchair folks are really, really close again. Thankfully, I have not seen anything super horrific happen with the bleachers or anything of that nature, but I do believe it's in our best interest to move forward with something that accommodates the people that put their, put their seats in the stands and give them a fair opportunity to get to a place that they're comfortable when they're watching our events and give them a little bit more comfort in a new set of bleachers. Again, I'm going to go backwards here and say that when I first took this over, I didn't really think this was a high need, and I would think that right now it's a, it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. With that being said, a lot of the bleachers are slowly needing more attention, maybe be the best way to put it, in the fact that we have a very large student section at games, and that area is a little bit more worn out than a lot of other areas of the bleachers, for whatever reason. You can actually see the sag on that side if you look at them very closely, if you stand to the side of them, you can see the seats like this. And, you know, from time to time, I worry a little bit about bringing the bleachers in and out with our floor. There will be pieces from time to time that need to be reattached that fall beneath the wheels, and if you're not looking at that, you miss it and it kind of gets in that dangerous spot of ruining our nice new floor. So there's a lot of attention to detail with these bleachers to try and make sure that they're functional, and a lot of different people have a hand in there. My worry is, is that if somebody slips at some point with the attention to detail, helping somebody up the bleachers and not being prepared, that we're going to face something that we could have preventative, prevented. And then on the other side of it, I don't know how long bleachers typically last, but eventually things like that need to be replaced and updated. And I would, does anyone, do you know, offhand, they're original to the building, so whatever, however many years that is, that's to give you an idea, that's where we're sitting. Most of the bleacher projects that I've typically learned about is somewhere around the 30-year mark is kind of the expectancy of them. That's not an official anything, that's just kind of what it tends to be. If you look at the wood on our bleachers, there's many cracks, there's blue tape on them, there's all kinds of different things. So that's kind of where this started. We did throw a bleacher RFP, and unfortunately, we only did receive one bid. This was sent out to every possible bleacher company, which I'm learning there are not many of them, as well as posted in all the appropriate places. Was really hoping for more bids, but received one. What I'm sort of learning is a lot of these places will regionally bid because it makes sense for shipping and having people to install and assist the bleacher project. And there's three main bleacher companies, it's pretty much all that exists, and not all of them are regional. The one that did put a bid in for us is the same company that did these bleachers 30-whatever years ago. They have also done a lot of the bleacher projects, almost all the bleacher projects that I'm aware of, the schools, most recently, I think G E T put bleachers in a year or two ago, they did their project, they were super happy with them. So I am, I am recommending a few things for you to consider. First of all, we did the bid in two pieces. One was for new bleachers in gym A and B, that would be the competition gym, and then we did an optional piece for what I'll call the auxiliary gym, gyms. Couple of reasons for that. The auxiliary gym bleachers, if you look in there, we had a, had an overhead door installed with our new referendum and didn't get new bleachers, so the bleachers actually cover the door, the overhead door, which makes the use of that door pretty minimal. You have to move the bleachers to be able to utilize the door. That doesn't normally come into a major problem until we get to gymnastics season, in which we have to move equipment through there, and that's a, that's a pretty integral piece. But again, we have to move those bleachers with giant pallet jacks that really do a number on the floor. So was looking at making the auxiliary gym an optional portable bleacher solution, and in this particular bid, that portion of it came back for $77,292. That solution would make the bleachers a one-person move and very, very simple to move around and maneuver. They fit through doorways, they could easily be moved from school to school, they could be moved out into the commons, they could be moved into the gym A and B. I know our student body during assemblies is really overflowing. We have three rows of kids kind of at the bottom of the bleachers, and they're kids, they're okay with being on the floor, but sometimes for like a Veterans Day assembly or whatever, it's, it's a better look for us to provide them seating. So this, this solution would be able to be moved into gym A and B and surround the whole gymnasium to provide quite a bit more seating, roughly 300, or what is it, 20 times 15, if quite a few more seats, 300 people. In addition, these portable bleachers offer us some solutions. We built gym D, the gymnasium, which is used every day as a classroom, and kids meet in there, and when they have to take a test, they sit on the ground. I think the learning environment, being a former fire teacher is always nice to be able to provide our students a place to sit, and these bleachers would get utilized for that in the time being, and then can be wheeled over to gym C to be used for events because they're one-person move. So I would consider the 20 portable bleachers. The reason I came to the number 20 is I measured everything out in gym C, looking at, at our school probably not getting smaller, and figuring out like the number of people that attend basketball and volleyball games and different things in C, if you've ever poked your head in there, they're very full, and trying to provide more seating solutions. We could technically line up both sides in gym C and we would be using 20. A lot of other events like powerlifting, assemblies, PE classes would benefit from this move as well. And then the, the other bleachers in gym A and B, we are constrained to a 22-inch bleacher. It's the only thing that will fit in that gymnasium. Typically, new bleachers that are installed are 26-inch, so that's just the space that you have knee space to persons back in front of you, if you will. The reason that we're constrained to 22 is because our gymnasium's not big enough wall-to-wall. So we only have the option of the 22, which is the smallest, which when these were installed was kind of common, but now it's more of a 24, 26-inch bleacher. So I'm recommending the 11 and 5/8 roll rise in lieu of the 9 and 5/8 roll rise as an option. And the reason for that is because we have an inability to have the knee space addition, this would provide a height, so an extra two inches on each row. We can go up, we just can't go out with, with the layout of our current gymnasium, and it'll at least provide a little bit more optimal viewing for the people sitting in the stands. That additional amount is $5,673. So all in all, the bleachers in gym A and B, $185,648. The additional $5,673 for the additional height is an add-on. And then the additional 20 portable bleacher solutions for the auxiliary gyms come out to a total of $268,613. There is one additional cost with this, that would be the demolition and disposal of the existing bleachers, which I think we should reopen for another bid. And the reason for that is there, I, guilty, I did not do a great job in planning that portion of it. I did not realize the amount of value in scrap and the potential wanting to retain the wood. I just kind of felt like you could work that out. That's my inexperience and not scared to admit it, but I think we should reopen that bid because the scrap is worth something, and it's worth something very locally. Would not take a lot of effort to move it there, and I think that should be laid out exactly who retains the scrap. I've got some ideas for the wood to potentially be used as like some projects in, in the, in the school setting with our tech ed classes and being able to create some really cool memory things that we could sell to the community. So I would like to, an opportunity to really redo that and restate the purpose of those things and where that would all be. And then also, I think it's important to either include or exclude gym, the auxiliary gym bleachers, which I did not identify in there because I didn't know where this would be. So my recommendation again is to do the project with the auxiliary gyms and the extra two-inch rise for $268,613. Reopen a bid for the demolition and disposal, which for your reference was $18,700 in the original bid with not including gym C and/or defining who retains the roughly $2,000 to $3,000 worth of scrap material. So that would have to kind of be considered. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one question. You had mentioned early on that one of the safety issues was the, the height of the steps that folks had to use to get up. We're now adding this two-inch rise, are the steps, are there other like more steps then?
Yeah, there's more steps. So the new bleachers, ours have, I can't remember, 18-inch step or 16-inch step, they're pretty considerable. There would essentially be three steps in that level with the new ones.
Each one of them, okay.
So roughly a person would have to be able to lift their leg four, four inches. There's stair options with, with new bleachers, so if I know I don't have the ability to lift my leg very high, I have a handrail and short steps. Typically, that's the only thing that's installed nowadays with bleachers. It does eliminate a little bit of the seating, potentially, you can still sit there, but they're, they're shorter steps, like for our assemblies, I'm sure kids will pile into it, but during games, you'd probably get out of that aisle way and allow the handrails to be used for people needing those steps. Also, the bottoms push in and out so you can make less or more room in the front.
Right.
For both team chairs, wheelchairs, lots of different configurations you can do without pushing the rest of the bleacher in with new bleachers.
Yeah, and then I assume there's railings and stuff with the steps.
Yeah, yeah, really, really nice handrails compared to the none that we have.
What was, what was the intended timeline? I didn't see, it said keeping intended timelines, but I'm not sure what was in the bill.
Yeah, so that's a really problematic thing with the, not problematic, it's something we really have to consider for this project is when is the gym most available to be shut down for a full month? You probably don't realize the amount of traffic that that space gets, but if Chad needs to get some guys in there to fix a basketball hoop for one day, it is a challenge to try and figure out when that one day is that we can shut that down. Just in looking at our sports schedules, the end of the spring season is the, is the most opportune time. It also saves us money on the bleacher project itself. I did a little research in just kind of that idea and timelines, if there are price saving on one portion of it or another. If you wait until summer when they're the busiest, you pay the most amount of money, they're the least busy in May. So by starting our project in early May and hopefully completing it by the summer, we benefit from a slider lower price, and then also we benefit because that's the least used portion of our gym. It's still heavily used, but we can, we have more options then because there's outdoor sports happening, hopefully, Wisconsin weather, you never know.
All right, any other questions?
And I think the other portion of that too is the middle school's going to be starting a project in which gymnasiums are going to get shut down too, so just trying to coordinate, not pushing it a year out.
Yes, I'm just wondering a little bit more about the competition and the bids and how you found those, and you said there's only a couple options, like how were those options determined and?
Well, it was sent out to everybody who makes bleachers that I could, I could find. So there's three manufacturers of bleachers, and then there's a whole bunch of people that sell them. So they sell the different brands, but there's three brands that I'm aware of, and then all the other people who sell bleachers, the different companies that like install and sell bleachers, they either sell one or two of the brands or just one, or I don't know if they do all three, but what I was getting at is there's not a lot of like people that make bleachers, it's Hussey, Irwin, and I forget the name of the other one, those are the three main brands. But then companies that would be bidding on this, they're selling one of those three bleachers to you. So there's not like a lot of differentiation between the product, they're all kind of like, this is what a new bleacher is. So then it just comes down to like regional, like if I'm in California and bidding on this project, I have a long ways to ship my bleacher versus Minneapolis. So I think, I think a lot of people sat out because of distance, is my guess. Reaching out to G E T, that's kind of what I learned, like kind of with bleachers, it's regional is, is effective because they can save you cost. And they all know what each other can bid, I'm sure. And, and they all know what each other can bid, I'm sure, I, I'm guessing.
But in the, and then there was only one bid.
Only one bid was received. It was sent out to all.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. So it was, it was sent out to all the bidding companies. It was posted. It was, um, I emailed, I searched on Google bleacher manufacturer, bleacher distributor, bleacher installer. And I emailed out like thirty different companies. Here's our RFP. A lot of them responded, asked questions. Just didn't get any bids.
All right, thanks, Jason. All right, moving on to item eight point two. I welcome the Director of Facilities, Facility Services Chad Brando to present the middle school construction bids. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening, everyone. I am Chad Brando, Director of Facility Services. Um, my privilege to bring the middle school addition and the remodel bid packages to you. It's been long awaited. Before I start going through the numbers, I wanted to give a shout out to a few people. This has been a long road, uh, lots of meetings, lots of input, possibly a little frustration. I see Ryan Vogler's here with Ben. I got a big shout out to the staff over at the middle school. They literally went through a two hundred thousand square foot building with three floors and went room by room by room. Uh, just everything that you could possibly think of. And, and I say they did that multiple times. So it's been a big effort by a lot of people and uh, I'm just super honored to be part of that team. So with that said, we did get the bid packages in. Um, it went out for bid October second and they were due on the twenty-sixth of October and reviewed on the first of November. We had thirteen scopes of work. Um, and then we had five alternates. For the scopes of work, um, we got some local companies. We have Olympic Builders. Got the uh, Scope one, Weezer Brothers Scoop, uh, Scope two, Lettiger Roofing, Scope four, Glass Service Center, Scope five, Service Tile and Stone Works, uh, Scope six, PCI, Austad Work Scope seven, Swanson Flooring, Work Scope eight, Viking Fire Protection, Work Scope nine, we have Cooley Region, got Work Scope ten, I mean nine and ten. Nope, excuse me, ten and eleven, Stanic Electric, Work Scope twelve, and then we have Otis. Bernie Buckner got twelve and then we have Otis Elevator got Work Scope thirteen. Um, as far as the alternate bid goes, we have alternate bid bids. We had five. We had Weiser Brothers. Weezer Brothers got uh, one and two and three of the alternate bids. Lettiger got alternate bid four. And then the alternate bid five is set aside money for the abatement. If we run into any kind of uh, abatement issues with a tear down, we already had the environmental assessment done. Uh, you can only peel back the onion so far in these buildings. We have students there. Um, so far, the only thing that they're seeing is we'll probably have some abatement issues right now for what they know is the possible uh, floor tile. As far as the glue underneath the floor tile, they're thinking that's where they're gonna have the abatement issues. Uh, well, knock on wood, we could find more. Uh, that thirty-five thousand dollars that you see that is set aside, it could, we could get some of that back and put it back into the referendum. It could go higher. It's just again, like I said, we can only peel back the onion so far as of right now. Uh, but it is looking good as far as right now. Uh, the big takeaway is the combined total of the lowest base bids for the scopes and for the alternate bids came in at twenty-three million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is four million seven hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars under budget. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight point three. Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards will present the WASSIS report. This item is for report only.
Ooh, there we go. Good evening. So tonight I get to share with you the results of our state assessments um, that our students took last spring. So our Wisconsin Student Assessment System. So when we look at our district dashboard, um, we have three areas or three um, sections that really we keep track of for measures as part of that. Um, that would be ELA, which is grades three through eight on Wisconsin Forward. Math, which is also three through eight on Wisconsin Forward. And then we have the ACT suite, which includes, um, it used to be Aspire. It made a shift now into um, the pre-ACT secure. So when we get to those graphs, that's gonna look really fun. And then uh, ACT for our eleventh graders. So not only are these assessments required by the state, but it is something that we use as part of a body of evidence to really see how we're doing in terms of preparing our students to be college and career ready. So really looking at the health of our system. We also use it um, as an instrumental piece when we're doing our school improvement planning. So we do a lot of work in turn, in terms of digging into where are those areas that we're doing really well, things that we can celebrate. And uh, also where are some areas that we need to focus in a little bit, but a little bit more so. Um, results are, are reported out in terms of proficiency. So um, for the vast majority of the charts and graphs I'll be showing you, there, that's the percent of students that are um, testing into the proficient area. So this is a required accountability measure. So while we'll be digging into the specifics of the assessment pieces, you'll also see this reflected um, when I come back to the next board meeting to share with you our um, our school report cards and our district report card. So when we look at the Wisconsin State Assis- State Assessment System, the WSAS, um, like I said, Wisconsin Forward um, has ELA and math. So those are the big pieces that we'll see. But we also have in grades four, eight and ten, a social studies assessment on there as well. And then in grades four and eight, there's also a science piece to it. We also have the dynamic learning maps. This is a very small percentage of our students who take this. This is determined through an I, um, individualized educational plan process. So the I E T, I E P team would be determining um, which students um, best fit that assessment. And then when we look at the ACT suite, the high school, we have, as I said, we went from Aspire now to ACT Secure. That would be grades nine and ten. And then we still have the ACT writing, uh, with writing in grade eleven. So the first one we're gonna take a look at is um, our Wisconsin Forward results. Um, you'll notice this is grades three through eight and we are really making some nice gains. Um, you'll see Holman is the, the red um, point at the top there. You'll see that we um, are um, we also realigned our peer districts. So you'll see the line there. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, you'll see um, how we perform compared to the new peer groups. And then twenty-two and twenty-three as well, you'll see that we're making some nice gains, continuing to be above the average of the peer groups, even with the new peer groups, and then um, pretty consistently outperforming the state. Uh, when we look at math, again, grades three through eight, we're con- continuing to show some growth. Um, with the alignment of our peer districts, you'll see we'll re- that we remain just below the average um, percent proficiency when we look at their averages. Um, but we are still continuing to be consistently um, and significantly above the average of the state. Um, science for Wisconsin Forward, again, this would be just grades four and eight. You'll see that um, we have, uh, last year we actually had achieved a five-year high. Um, you'll see that we've dropped a little bit from last year, but we still remain above the average of our peers and significantly above the state with sixty-one point seven percent of our students um, meeting proficiency on that. Um, social studies, again, grades four, eight and ten, similar to look um, to what we just saw with um, science. We did drop just a little bit, a whole tenth of a percent. Uh, but we still remain above our peers and the state with sixty-four point three percent of our students um, earning proficiency. So now we're gonna dig into really how our students in all of our subgroups um, performed as well. Um, just with a goal to better serve all of our students. This is something we think is really important to dig into, just in terms of um, making sure that we're serving all students the best of our ability. So you'll see that um, we have the percentage of the makeup of each of our peer groups across our entire district. And then you'll see our prevent, percent proficiency in ELA and math. Um, on the left table, this is by race and ethnicity. On the right-hand table, this is our economically um, disadvantaged and are not economically disadvantaged. So you can see prevent, percent proficiency in both ELA and math and that as well. The numbers that are red show a slight de- decrease in proficiency over last year and the green numbers um, show a slight increase over last year. Um, the, these tables show a breakdown of our achievement for our students with disabilities and our multilingual or English learner students. Again, green shows improvement over last year and red is a little bit of a drop in achievement. So you'll see um, when we're looking at our students with disabilities, that's thirteen point eight percent of our population. So you'll see um, students without disabilities, about fifty-five point nine percent. Um, earning proficiency with twelve point, or twenty-one point six, uh, in contrast for students with disabilities. You'll see a similar significant gap in math as well. When we look at our multilingual students compared to our English proficient students, you'll also see a significant gap there as well. Um, we increased proficiency for our English proficient students, but we actually dropped a little bit for our multilingual students when we looked at Wisconsin Forward. Then that takes us into ACT, um, pre-ACT Secure rather. This is again, replacing Aspire. It still has the same um, five um, subjects that are tested, English, reading, writing, math, science. We combined English, reading and writing to come up with a single ELA score. So um, we have a few fun drop down lines here on this one. So when we realigned our peer districts in twenty twenty-one, you can see kind of where we shifted in terms of our performance in comparison in comparison to our new uh, peer districts. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, you see the line because not only do we have the new peer districts, but then we have a new assessment on top of that as well. Good news is, is that we are making really good um, steady progress in improving our performance EL- in ELA. And you'll see that with now up to forty-eight point four percent of our students who've earned proficiency there. So just a little bit under the average of our peer districts and again, significantly above those of the state. Um, with math, you'll see we are making gains. We still have some work to do in order to um, start closing the gap with that of our, our new peer district. Um, we are continuing to increase. You'll see um, steady increase over the last three years, up to forty point six percent of our students who are achieving proficiency in math. Uh, with science, um, at ninth and tenth grade, you'll notice that in twenty-one, twenty-two, that we actually dipped a little bit below the average of our new peer group, but then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we rebounded, continuing to improve and are above both the peers and the state with forty-one point seven percent of our students earning proficiency on science. Now we get to uh, our demographic breakdown. Um, again, the percent of representation in our district remains the same as um, what we had used for Wisconsin Forward. But you can see um, the percent of students um, in each of our um, race ethnicity subgroups in terms of how they're performing. You'll see again, um, our, our Asian students dipped a little bit over last year in both ELA and math. Um, our students two or more races improved somewhat in ELA dipped a little bit in math uh, with improvements for our white students across the board. When we look at um, our percent uh, proficient in ELA and math, our non socio-economically disadvantaged versus our um, economically disadvantaged, you'll see a bit of a gap there. Last year, all of our socioeconomic data had been retracted, so we don't really have a number to compare against, but you can see our perfect percent, or I should say the year prior to that, since this is last year's data anyway. But you can see where um, our students performed on both of those as well. Okay. Um, this is our students with disabilities and our English proficiency. So again, um, you'll see in ELA, we, I should say, our students with disabilities and our students without great gains when we're looking at our pre-ACT. Um, across the board, we had improvements. You'll still see a pretty significant gap in terms of achievement between our students uh, with disabilities and our students without. Um, but the fact that they're both moving in the right, right direction is um, encouraging. Uh, when we look at our English proficiency, um, that's three point seven percent of our population. Um, we again, did not have a, a comparison base for ELA. Um, and math actually um, was zero percent for our multilingual students compared to our um, our English proficient students. And then that takes us into ACT, which is our eleventh graders. Again, this is those same five subject areas that we see in pre-ACT Secure with English, reading and uh, writing coming together under ELA. So this one's pretty exciting. So in ELA, you'll notice a really impressive amount of improvement with our eleventh grade students. Um, uh, very significant leap. Um, we haven't seen this in any of our other subject areas where we went with from twenty-eight point two percent earning proficiency all the way up to fifty. So we um, not only way outperformed the state, but we shot above our peer districts, peer districts as well. Where, and you can see the pretty significant gap we'd had in the year before. So this is something we're gonna want to continue to look at. Uh, when we look at math, you'll see again that we're making some nice progress here, but um, like our other assessments, see that that is an area that we're gonna have to continue to work at. Again, with thirty percent of our students um, earning proficiency there. Um, above the state average, but have a little bit to go yet in terms of catching up with the average of our peer districts. Um, our eleventh graders are also showing improvement in science. And while we're still below the average of our peers, we did outperform the state this year with thirty-three point one percent of our students earning proficiency there. Um, and then this brings us to um, an overall score called the composite score. So this one is not reported out in terms of proficiency, but in terms of score against um, the perfect score of thirty-six. So um, you'll notice that we're making some nice gains, um, putting us just below the average of our peers, yet above the state. So we went last year from a nineteen point two to a twenty point two. In terms of ACT composite scores, that's a pretty significant leap, um, given how close those numbers are. And then um, when we break this down by racistness and socioeconomic status, um, you'll see that again, really nice gains. Lots of green numbers there, which is good to see. So improvement for um, our, our Asian students. Um, but you can also see, uh, as well as our white students and students of two or more races, you'll notice that um, a, a pretty, some discrepancies in terms of that average composite score based on the subgroup. So that's gonna be something that we're gonna wanna take a look at as well. And then we, we look at our um, socioeconomic status data. You'll also notice a bit of a discrepancy there that we're gonna wanna keep an eye on as well. And when we look at our breakdown of achievement for students with disabilities and our multilingual um, students, you'll, you'll notice again, we had some gains with our students with disabilities um, in ELA, a slight dip in math there as well. And then um, you'll notice a, a gap again in terms of what that composite score is with our students without disability abilities having an average of twenty point five versus a sixteen point five for our students um, with I E Ps. Um, and then again, I believe it's because it is one grade level and probably a very, very small sample size, but all of the data was redacted in terms of multilingual students. So anytime we have less than twenty students, they will not report it out because it's personally identifiable. So lots of great things to celebrate when we look at this data. So again, we see a lot of continued growth in ELA math. We're making some really nice rebounds there. Um, and some movement in closing gaps in ELA and math with, with some of our subgroups. When we look at pre-ACT Secure, that ninth and tenth grade, we saw significant improvement in all tested areas. Um, it is a different assessment, so that's something that we're gonna wanna keep, um, keep an eye on to make sure that that continues as we move forward. Uh, we also saw some movement in closing gaps in ELA and math with specific subgroups there as well. Uh, ACT grade eleven, we had the highest rate of ELA proficiency that we've seen in recent history and outperforming our peers, which is a huge celebration. We also saw significant gains in all of our tested areas and then again, some progress in closing gaps for our subgroups. But it still means we have work to do. So um, we need to continue to work on strengthening that core academic for all of our students, really working to increase that um, opportunity and access for all students and then really work on improving access towards those grade level standards for all kids to really make sure that we show um, improvement for all kids across all grade levels. So we are doing a lot of work already um, to this end. So as you know, um, we already have um, implemented some new district screeners. So K eight is using iReady with pre-ACT in nine eleven. This has a better alignment with our state assessment system, so it should help us really to better um, prepare and analyze our, the health of our system before we hit our state assessments. So it should help us really to better prepare and analyze the health of our system before we hit our state assessments. We also have been working with a new K 12 newly aligned DLA curriculum with the updated standards, priority and focus areas that we had gone through our needs assessment as we went through our curriculum cycle. This year, we're working on piloting some new instructional resources to really help students access those standards. We're working on strengthening our structured literacy instruction in elementary. We continue to have the support of Reading Core in K through three across all of our elementaries to really help make sure that students have the support they need in addition to our intervention staff and a solid universal program. And we are providing, we're actually in the midst of another reading teacher licensure program with Viterbo. So making sure that our staff are well trained and well equipped to address any needs that come up in reading. When we get to math, this year, we're working on rewriting our K 12 math curriculum. We're excited to be able to continue our partnership with Dr. Jen Coziak from U W L, one of the professors over there, who is very excited and eager to continue the partnership with Holman, which is really exciting. We're also continuing to examine model sites, doing book studies, additional math PD opportunities, knowing that math is an area that we need some continued support. As you know, equity and leadership development is a core focus for our district. So our work with Amanda Goodenough, the DEI committee and all that work, really to make sure that we are setting up a system and culture that is inclusive for all students will help with that as well. And then again, the continued development of social emotional learning in all of our buildings to really set the stage so the kids have what they need so they can access academics as well. We also have continued instructional support through professional development, our district coaching program, so that we have supports in all buildings. So we still, we have our middle school and high school, PLC and instructional coaches. We have our district inclusion coach as well as we have some elementary and district level coaches as well. Exciting this year, we've started a partnership with CISA for some support with our multilingual program, knowing that that is also an area that we, we need to do some work. And then again, our administrators are working with Solution Tree Associates to continue building that PLC culture and that continuous improvement piece that's built right into everything that we do every day. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So when I look at the results, I guess it doesn't matter which one I'm looking at. I know that you're, you know, averaging the peer districts against us. But when I look at all of those peer districts within that average score, it seems like DePere is significantly outscoring everybody else, pretty much consistently across the board. I mean, even West DePere a little bit, but DePere for sure.
DePere is a standout for sure.
I mean, is, can we find out what they're doing?
I intend to make some calls, so. Yes, that's one that we really want to learn more from to see what they're doing and see if we can harness that somehow and, and leverage some of those key instructional pieces and see if we can't replicate some of that here for our students as well.
And my second question was, and I probably asked you this last year and I just need a refresher. But in order for a student to be proficient, they have to reach a certain percentage.
Yes.
And I, I mean, is ELA is different than math?
Yeah, the metrics are different on each of the assessments, forward versus pre ACT secure and ACT. So there are, there are cut scores in a breakdown for each of those assessments that come out in your, you should see some of that in your, in parent reports.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just know like when I have parent teacher conferences of like, oh, proficient is, you need, you need your child to score like a sixty to be proficient or something like that. So I, okay, but it's different for everything.
It is, and you'll see a breakdown on that and you get the, oh, I can't remember the name of the report. I want to say Sir, but that's not it. You get a report that has a breakdown of all of those pieces and you can see where your land, your student is landing within those ranges.
So, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
You remind me.
Oh, go ahead.
How the peer districts are determined?
Sure. So we look at, we look for districts that are similar in terms of size, socioeconomics, percent of students who are multilingual, percent of students who have disabilities, a similar makeup to Holman. And so we just recalibrated that this last year. So this is the first year we really implemented using the new data.
So how often does that change?
Is that like a year? We had the last one, what, five years?
We typically like to take a look at it and reevaluate it about every five years and that, so that we can just, and what we recognized is a few of our peer districts did change in that. And then once we get our list and we usually get a list of a good ten of them, then we look, we start to look at, okay, which ones are high achieving peer districts and then start to research a little bit more around what, and have conversations with what, what are they doing? So.
I was just going to ask economically disadvantaged, is that free reduced lunch? How is that defined? Okay. And then I think my other question, just like in reviewing this, first of all, big wins. Cause I remember this presentation from last year and I was like, whoa. And thank you for providing the breakdown.
It was much easier to present this year, thanks.
Probably easier to put together the slides to do. I guess I'm, I'm curious if you could say a little more about like an opportunities for improvement. It talks about continuing work on strengthening academics for everyone.
Yes.
But I guess I'm curious, like, you know, we see disparities across several different sectors. And when the universal supports fall short, do we have, like, are, are we shifting anything that we're doing for the students that we're identifying as having gaps? Like, how, how does, how does that look?
Well, we look at groups, absolutely. So we're doing a lot of work, like I said, partnering with CISA with our multilingual students. So we're looking at how to get more specific in digging into their access scores, for example, which is an assessment they take to determine how well they're progressing in terms of language proficiency. So getting much more targeted in terms of what that instruction looks like. We had our Title One report not long ago, we're continuing to do that. We have a lot of work happening right now too, in terms of Act Twenty and training of staff and as well as changing of pretty core instructional pieces universally at the elementary level to really shore up those pieces for all students as well. So we really work hard to have not only that core curriculum that's accessible to everybody, but knowing that some kids are always going to need a little bit more help. So having really those wraparound services to support in real time when they need it as well. Did that answer?
Yeah, that helps, thank you. And actually that, is it Act Twenty? Is it, yeah, that was, that's K three?
Parts of it dip into four K, but up to three. And then there's actually some ramifications moving up beyond that as well, but.
Thank you.
I just want to say, yeah, great information. Maybe just a recommendation around like maybe some future education for parents. I know, you know, the forward testing can be pretty intimidating when you get that for your child. And I mean, we do fall short sometimes and individually, there's going to be pockets of kids that fall short. And then I think about the i Ready screener and sometimes that's a better snapshot of how your child is doing and maybe helping parents understand how they might be connected. And I know I personally had teachers this year that said, don't worry, like the i Ready stuff looks good. And so that was just really nice as a parent to just get a little bit of education around that. So just a recommendation.
Thank you. Well, we always want to impress upon the fact that this is one snapshot, one point in time. And so we, this, we like to look at the entire body of evidence before we really make any big decisions. But knowing that this is the one that's publicly reported, it's a pretty big player in the game.
But yeah, thank you for all your work.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eight point four. Dr. Mueller will present the resolution for modification of school start date for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five for consideration on tonight's consent agenda.
Yeah, good evening. So in past years, we'd always bring a calendar or even sometimes two years of calendar forward for approval the following year. Those calendars have always started, our school start date was always September first, and that's due to state statute that we were not allowed to start school till September first. There are caveats though of reasons why you can start school before September first. And one of them, you heard earlier tonight, our middle school construction bid. And one of them is when you have projects, construction projects and those that would affect in, for us, we have coming up multiple, actually a construction project at the middle school, at Viking, and then we will be having one at Evergreen. And working through that, you are allowed then to bring a resolution forward as a board to the Department of Public Instruction to request a different start date to help align so that you are able to align your phasing of your construction projects. So to feasibly align when kids can be in school and in those classrooms. So just, we were just working on phasing for our middle school in the whole timeline with that. In Viking, we just went out to bid and started the phasing of that. And determined Evergreen project will be not this upcoming summer, the internal remodel, but the following summer. So with knowing all that information, it was recommended that we will have, we have a hundred and seventy eight student days either way. But by shifting and starting on August twenty sixth, which is a Monday, it's a week before in Labor Day in that. And we would end then May thirtieth. So then that allows when we have three projects going on, more time to complete the constructions and it aligns with the phasing projects more efficiently. So due to that, how that would work is we would bring this resolution upon board approval. It would be sent with a letter to the Department of Public Instruction. And then that would allow us then to bring back the school calendar for approval by the school board. So really, it's all about, this would be a one time event right now for the twenty four, twenty five school. You're allowing us to end school on May thirtieth to allow for time for those construction projects to occur. So any questions? I don't know if I explained that.
Could you, could you, we keep talking at the same time. Could you speak to, I guess, like communications plans for staff and for the community? About how the, like, if it's approved, how it would be communicated out?
Yeah. So why I have not communicated anything, DPI could deny it. And then we could have communicated something that we would have to rechange the communication on in that. So upon board approval, say this DPI approves it, we bring it to the next board meeting and our calendar is approved. Then the communication will go out through our, all of our avenues of our communication, such as our email, through our Visions newsletter, through our social media platforms and so on. And I'd work with our communication specialists on, on all of those communication avenues and venues.
I guess I'm still trying to wrap my head around the difference of, cause the summer's still the same length, we're just moving it.
Yeah, it's just shifting to align better with the projects.
Can you be more specific? Like, why does the project, why does it make such a big difference to start one week earlier?
We have three buildings getting remodeled and done the following summer. So the work, the workforce needed to get that and allow that done, we have more time to do that, to get into the buildings earlier.
Yeah, I'm just so.
I guess I believe, I believe, I believe we want to have ensure that the projects are complete before the students start the next school year. And that one, we can make a big difference in how much work is being done.
What's the same length of a summer?
It will be longer because.
It will be longer.
Yeah, the following.
Because the next school year.
Yeah, so.
Starts so early.
So this upcoming summer, right now, we have the middle school. We have some slotted projects at the middle school and some at Viking. But then the following summer, which we would have more, a lot of time because we'd end May thirtieth, we have other projects at the middle school, other projects at Viking, and we also have Evergreen. And the type of projects, having that, it's not a lot of time, but having that extra week of time allows them to get in and get working on it and have a longer extended amount of time throughout the summer. They gain an extra week, which is a lot of time when you have multiple projects, three of them.
And I just wanted to be clear here, it's actually only four days because we are still going to have a four day weekend over Labor Day. Friday is still going to be a no school day. So Labor Day weekend will be a four day weekend.
Correct, that's what would be proposed, to allow for families to travel and still the people to go places and take trips and so on.
So curious, a lot of times we have school that Friday. And so just curious, like, why it was decided to maybe start that Monday and then have that Friday off? Cause we typically have school on those Fridays and I looked back at the last two calendars and then we only had a three day weekend for Labor Day. Was there, is there some kind of guideline that you have to have so many weeks of school?
No, it's instructional minutes.
Okay.
And that, so there's so, so many instructional minutes that are required at each of our levels.
Okay, so I'm just going to play devil's advocate here and what happens if we have to make up for snow days?
Or which discount, this upcoming, well, we have, our first two days are built within our calendar and they still would be. The third day, we can also find minutes within early release days and so on. Other things that we are looking at right now is being able to communicate out in advance. Like if we were to have up to a fourth one, and we're looking at this for communication even this year. Cause what we have found is sometimes we have four and then five, just to let people know ahead of time. If we run into a fourth one, this is what we're going to do. We might have to come to school on this day that is, and you'll see this in other school calendars where they have days off for staff and students where if we have so many snow days, you might have to come on that day that you had another day off. So that's what we're exploring right now that we would communicate out. You can always add instructional minutes on today's also.
Any other questions?
So we would essentially be then removing a week from this summer's proposed construction timeframes to add it on to gain a week next year in next summer, not the coming summer, but the summer after that. So to like finish the projects up, we begin a week then.
Correct. And what we're finding is the projects that they can start on at the middle school are areas that we can still have in session to a certain, certain extent, like the HVAC systems and other areas that aren't as disturbed. And I know Mr. Vogler is working closely with the staging of that.
So our expectation as like, as a district would be that we would be then done coming into the twenty five, twenty six school year with all these projects? Okay.
Yep. Correct.
Any thoughts, maybe it's too early in the plan, but like about how it would affect summer care options at elementary with the Y?
Yeah, we've been in conversation in, with the Y about what schools are available for summer care and which ones are, are not. We work very closely with them in those conversations. We've had other years where we've had to shift just due to other circumstances within buildings and use other locations within our community. And our families have reluctantly been very flexible with our, our YMCA, Y care, surround care.
All right. And it's not an option to like, just close part of a school off and have them continue, like block off.
We will be doing that too. Yeah, we will be doing some of that too.
Okay.
We're, we're doing multiple different, we're, we're combining multiple strategies to ensure that we can keep the students in school when they need to be in school. But then allowing blocks of time for when, like, you think of certain things like abatement, where you don't want the kids around in the school when that's necessarily, or being able to be secured off if that's going on. So the students are in a different part of the building or not in the building.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point five. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will now present the contract for speech and language services. This will also appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening. I was here a month or so ago to present the Contract for Speech and Language Services for one of our providers who was going to provide part-time until another provider was able to come into play. This is for a FMLA situation in one of our buildings. So as of, hopefully when this gets approved, we will have a 1.0 or a full-time position. We've been piecing together the position thus far. And now we're able to have two providers that are sharing the position, hopefully starting later this week. Questions about that? No, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like an item pulled out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Who was that, Bridgette this way?
Barb.
And Maggie, okay, Barb, I guess, I think I heard you first, but I got you at the same time. Barb, Barb made the motion, Maggie second, the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
I have two items off of that with our personnel report I'd just like to speak to tonight. One is, I just wanted to congratulate Sam, as she's our head custodian at Evergreen. She's been in the district for 23 and a half years. Just saw her the other day too. Just thank her for all of her service and everything she's done in keeping our building safe and secure for all of our students and staff. And then the other, I just am excited to welcome, we're going to have a new director of IT joining us in December and just welcome Kathleen Stefani to the district. And she actually is going to be here tomorrow to visit, but she's from the Oshkosh area. She's not able to be here tonight, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Barb.
Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee met tonight. We had a full house, I think we had 13 members tonight. And a lot of work was done tonight in developing our commitment statement. We hope to have a statement to present probably after our January meeting.
Excellent. Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, moving on to Crystal.
All right, so I just want to say a quick shout out to our teachers and staff we have today as like, if you didn't know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So just want to say thank you for that. I also want to mention winter activities. So much time is passing, it's crazy, it's very fast. And I just want to recognize like the winter sports season and good luck to those like involving themselves in that. Lastly, I also want to mention the DEI, DEI Committee meeting that we had today. Like what Barb said, there was a lot of progress done and made and we did a lot of talking and, yeah, very successful, but thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Chris.
We have a policy meeting coming up, which you'll mention on the 27th of our next meeting. I just wanted to give a shout out to the HMS Theater Group. They had a, their fall performance this last weekend. Was able to make it out to a couple of them. There's over 50 students that are involved in that and they presented the Phantom Toll booth this year, it was a great performance and it was a lot of good work by those, that student group. I was able to attend the Wasby State Legislative Conference two weeks ago. Just wanted to thank the district for allowing me to attend that. Very good information provided in on the declining enrollment throughout the state that we're seeing. The State Population Lab from the University of Wisconsin presented a lot of really good information. So I know we say that we're seeing less numbers projected out. It's occurring across the state, so it's not unique to us. We're seeing an aging population in our state and a lot of districts are seeing downturns projected and actualized in their, in their population, the students. Other things were talked about with public opinion and, and public schools. It's, we're seeing a downturn in that as well. It was done by Marquette University and their, you know, very high-ranked poll. There was a presentation on effective board governance that was very enlightening. And then they talked briefly about the changes coming that were mentioned in the Act 20, which is the reading act. So a lot of good information. I'll be sharing the presentations that were available with the fellow board members if you want to go through them and see them. If you have any questions for me, I can hope to articulate them back to you if you have anything. But that is all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Lindsey.
Yes, I just want to thank Patrick for coming tonight and speaking. It's just really nice in general to have community members speaking. So that was nice that you came and took the time. And I'm sure, as you heard, we all also had questions and with new information. So I guess I just want to encourage anybody that watches this at home, if you have a perspective or opinion, I'd love to hear it. I'm sure we all would love to hear it, maybe something we're not thinking about or, because I'm just sure there's other things that we're not thinking about, what this will impact besides tourism and, and summer care. And I just want to make sure that we're thinking through everything. So yeah, feel free to shoot emails or attend the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, Maggie.
I was going to echo the earlier gratitude to WIA officials and to school psychologists. And then also just acknowledge the efforts of everyone who organized a Veterans Day event. I went to Evergreen's and it was very moving and there was a very heartfelt tribute to Sam as well at Evergreen, not only for her years at the school district, but also for her years of in the armed forces. Thank you.
All right, Bridgette.
Yeah, I just wanted to give some kudos to Jason because I had lots of parents talk to me about the Winter Activities Code presentation that you gave. I was there myself and just like the really like positive culture that you're creating by sending those messages to parents around, you know, look for the good among, you know, the coaches and activity organizers. And just how many students in middle school and high school that I've, I've heard just talk about their really positive experiences this year. And I think that just goes to show what a well-rounded school district we have. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, thanks, Bridgette. I wanted to mention that I was at the Veterans Day Assembly at Sand Lake last Friday and there were family members of students who are veterans that attended the assembly and they are recognized and it was a great way to honor them and educate the students about the service and sacrifices they make. So that was really good. Tomorrow, I'm going to be attending Breakfast Buddies at Sand Lake and this is an opportunity for any adult to enjoy a full breakfast and spend some special time with one of the students in the morning. It's a really fun activity and I look, I look forward to being there tomorrow morning, bright and early. And then I am also planning on reading to a third grade classroom at Sand Lake on Wednesday to celebrate American Education Week. So thank you for the invite for that. I also want to thank all the officials that support our sports and that we couldn't offer any of our sports to our students without you. So we really value you. And lastly, I just want to thank the school psychologist and what you do every day to foster a positive and inclusive school environment for our students and to ensure that all students have the opportunity to thrive academically and emotionally while in school, so. That's all I have. Moving on to item 10.3, Board Self-Evaluation. The board has received information on how to access the self-evaluation forum and I ask board members to complete this evaluation by December 22nd. And then we'll, we'll be meeting as a group after the holidays for a workshop to discuss our results. Then our upcoming board meeting schedule, on November 27th, we have a policy committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at 7:00. We have a DEI committee meeting on December 11th at 5:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at 7:00 PM. The December 13th workshop listed on this agenda is going to be moved and it'll be moved to after the board meeting on November 27th. And more information will be coming out about that. And then in January, so we only have one regular board meeting in December because of the holidays later in the month. And then on, in January, on the 8th, we have a board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then we have the state convention, January 17th through the 19th in Milwaukee. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All right, Chris has moved.
I'll second.
Bridgette, second, okay. To adjourn the meeting at 8:21 PM, motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes.